All right, I'm going to call the Willets City Council meeting to order on this November 13th at 6:30 PM. If you'll all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for joining us this evening. I'm going to move on to the roll call.
Councilmember Connie Strong.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Present.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Present. Councilmember Connie has an excused absence this evening. And our next order of business is public communication. But before we get to that, I just want to take, we will get to it, but a moment of silence if you would indulge me. Margie Hanley passed away recently, and we just want to take a moment to recognize her and the leadership that she had in this community. She was quite the force. She was a very kind, strong leader, and I think she's well deserving of just a moment of our time just to recognize and appreciate all that she gave to our community. We're moving on to public communication. The city council welcomes input from the audience. If there's a matter of business on the agenda that you're interested in, you may address the council when this matter is considered. If you wish to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. In order for everyone to be heard, please limit your comments to three minutes per person. The Brown Act regulations do not allow action to be taken on audience comments in which the subject is not listed on the agenda. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. While the city council welcomes public criticism of policies, procedures, programs, or services of the agency, behavior that disrupts, disturbs, impedes, or renders infeasible the orderly conduct of the meeting, and that includes but is not as limited to the use of profanity, slurs, yelling from the audience, threatening remarks, physically threatening conduct, or physical or verbal displays of disrespect, won't be tolerated, and then those individuals will have to be removed. I'm sure we're going to have none of that this evening, and looking forward to hearing from the public on any item. Keep in mind, this is items that are not on the agenda. Perfect. If you'd like to speak after each speaker, just raise your hand. I'll call you. You'll step up to the podium and just state your name for the record if you would, please.
I believe this is the time where I have to say that. In the minutes that are supposed to be in group, today there was one thing that needs to be a little changed. It says that Nicole Caldwell, acting chief and operator, responded that the clarifier was new when the plant was redone in 2011. Unfortunately, clarifiers only last for 10, 15 years. No, it needs to say unfortunately, mechanicals only last. So anything mechanical is for 10 to 15 years only, not only specifically that one clarifier. So we just need to change that.
We can't respond to items on the agenda, Nikki, but we'll certainly keep that in mind when we get to the minutes, okay? All right. Okay. Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, we'll start in the front, and then I'll work my way back.
Good evening, I'm Robin Leeler. I have two comments. I want to thank Madge for clarifying the directions on the pavilion. That two things were directed. The shortening the cement slab, and can't remember the other one. The position of the pavilion was a request to just consider if it should be moved. And I've been getting more and more feedback from people who say, no, it needs to stay in the northeast corner. So I'm just putting that forward as an opinion that that's a better placement for it. The second thing is the consideration of emergency planning for fire and earthquake. And I ran for city council in 1998, 26 years ago. And Jerry Gonzalez was the police chief then, and he invited me to the police station for a tour. And one of the things that I saw was a room. It had desks and chairs and kind of random stuff still being organized. And he said, this is getting ready for the, this would be the command center in case of an emergency. And if you're running for city council, I want you to understand that that's one of your responsibilities in an emergency, to be prepared, to direct and lead. I think he was aware that police chief would be very much involved in an emergency, but he recognized that the people in charge are going to be elected officials of the community itself that everybody else would be working under. And I just want to keep that in mind as going forward with emergency plans, that it should be under the guidance of an approval of an elected official of the people of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, I don't know any of you all. I'm relatively new back in Willets. My name is Barbara Mason. I live at Clark Trailer Park. And I'm very curious about the draft proposal that you did last city council meeting about taking all of the property between Barber Lane and San Francisco, between Central and Railroad Avenue, to build apartments. Our landlord got a copy of a letter stating that you all intended to do that.
We can't comment to items on the agenda, but what I would suggest is, have you had an opportunity to speak to city manager yet?
No, I have not.
Okay. Brian, would you be available to meet with this constituent?
I can, but I believe that would probably be more so Mr. Dooley.
Actually, that is correct.
Mr. Dooley?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Mason, can I get your phone number, and I will pass it on to Mr. Dooley after the meeting.
I lived in Willets area for about four years. Then I moved back to Florida. Then I moved to Arizona, and now I'm back here. I originally came here from Virginia. And I'm still getting used to how things work in Willets.
Well, thank you for coming and speaking this evening. And Mr. Dooley, we'll follow up with you and give you some information on that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Rodriguez and council. My name's Michelle Goodman, and I'm the outreach manager for Redwood Waste Solutions. I'm here today to invite you to our open house that we're having at the Willets Transfer Station on Thursday, November 21st, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. We plan to give the community a tour of the transfer station, of the layout, and answer any questions that the community may have. As many may have realized, as they drive through the transfer station, we have a lot of things going on. And so next week, we're hoping that it'll be done. So if you're curious, here's some changes that you will be seeing next week. There's going to be a new scale house location, so it's going to be moved over to where the old buyback was, and there's going to be one scale house. We don't want people driving over that bridge. It's not safe, I think. So the public drop off is being moved to the old material recovery facility building. And then also, the buyback is going to be moved up to where the old public drop off was. All these decisions were made for various operational and safety reasons. And so this has been a large financial investment in the Willets community, and we would love to show you how it turned out. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else for items that are not on the agenda? All right, hearing none, I'm going to close public communication and move to public matters. The next order of business is the Little Lake Fire District Monthly Update. See, we have Chief Alvarez here. Glad you were able to be with us this evening.
Yes, a friend of mine texted Davy, not going to make it, I'm not going to make it, but we made it. So we assisted Brick Trails with a medical aid up in their district, and we were able to make it in time. Kind of things around the firehouse, we did do the haunted Halloween day. I don't know if anybody brought their youngsters through there or not. It's something we did when COVID kind of hit. We just dressed the bay up in a little scary fashion. And I think myself personally, and I know a lot of the firefighters as well, enjoy seeing the community in that light of, you know, happy smiles. You have your children, your kids, and everything's going great because we don't see that fortunately that, you know? So I love seeing that, the kids laughing. Couple of them were crying when they went out, but we apologize for that. They did get some good candy. So we continue doing that every year. We did have Brick Trails assist us, and WPD stopped by for a while and helped with that as well. I appreciate that. We did have 59 calls for the month of October, which brings us up to our current data of our current call volume of 673. Training, we hit on ropes and knots, which kind of led to our transition out of the wildland atmosphere and into the winter months where we get the over the bank vehicles. In our district, we have the 162 Highway, Highway 20, north of Willets and the ridge. Unfortunately, we get a lot of vehicle accidents in those areas and the highway encompassing our district. So we do train on that. That's kind of our bread and butter for the vehicles over the side. Unfortunately, we had one in 162. I think there were 300 to 400 feet down, so. We train on that periodically, kind of make that our priority during the winter months. And then we did some training with Ridgewood Ranch. So we went down there. I tried to make the trainings as real as possible. Ridgewood Ranch, the Golden Rule area, has good hills and stuff like that, so to kind of get more of a real life training on that, of what the ladies and gentlemen will be going through. We did also attend a joint county drill with Yukaya Fire, Redwood Valley, Potter Valley, Cal Fire Attendant, and then Brick Trails Fire. And simulations, working with those other departments in Yukaya, giving scenarios, structure fires, rescues, and stuff like that. And that just kind of gives us some mutual aid. We're always calling on each other. We couldn't do this alone. We call for Brick Trails, we'll call for Yukaya, Redwood Valley assists on the ridge with the vehicle accidents there. So it takes a lot of agencies that you may or not know that come and assist with different emergencies we have, and we'll go down to help them. We did send out some strike teams, kind of talking about that mutual aid to Lake County, to the Voyles Fire, and the Glen Haven Fire. And I know in return, they would send anything our way if we were in need of that. We did do our EMT recertification. We have three more that are going to attend a class in Leightonville. That's going to bolster our EMTs to approximately 14 pending they pass the national registry. And every time you do that, it's every first Wednesday of the month, they'll have to recert, you have to have so many hours to keep that EMT license valid. So we went over bleeding control and shock, and we invited other agencies. COLO Fire comes down and assists as well. Also, the WPD, I think you were sending your guys. They've been a great help on calls. They're usually first there in the early morning hours to assist with the CPR calls. And then just kind of training with them and working through that will teach them how we kind of do the CPR. They've been nothing but great help. I appreciate that, having you guys attend that and help with that. We have received four new applications to join the fire department, which is super exciting. The chiefs meeting, when you go to those for the Mendocino County Chiefs, everybody's hurt for volunteers. I don't want to get into the generational thing, but it seems harder to pull the younger guys into volunteering. Seems like everybody kind of values more family time now than, and I don't blame them, than actually helping, but that is what it is, and we're still getting volunteers. And just a reminder, the first of November, the burn van was lifted. We got a ton of burn permits that came in. Just remember the back of that, the 10 feet clearance, adult there, have a water supply. We still have been getting some escape control burns. Yukaya, even on the coast, you hear the weather kind of deceives you a little bit in that, so just pay close attention to that when you guys are lighting fires, I guess. Other than that, that's all I had, so I thank you guys. Listen, thanks. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. All right.
One last thing, Davey answered my phone call one in the morning. We've been hammered the last few days. Unfortunately, he's not here, but if you let him know, I'll call him one in the morning. If you see him later, thank you.
Well, we know that the fire department is responding to much more than just fires. You're responding to all kinds of emergencies, which is very unique and special in rural communities to have our fire department so involved, and just really appreciate it. I know you mentioned quite a bit of training that the volunteers are doing, and I know that takes a lot of time and effort from families. I know that training is essential to being able to ensure that you're running a professional organization over there, and thank you.
I appreciate that. I don't, Dr. Chauvin, but I don't think a lot of people understand the time it does take. The volunteers, on Christmas morning, we get a call, we're going to go respond, Thanksgiving, birthdays, holidays, anniversaries, a long time, I guess you could say, for adults in the room, and stuff like that is a sacrifice for sure. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Oh. I'll be better on that.
Chief, before you go, we do give the public an opportunity to comment on items. So if you have a question or a comment for Chief Alvarez, this would be your time. Is there anybody from the public? Do you have one?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I do.
You have to step up here, John.
Okay. Well, you can stand there.
I know. You can stand next to each other. You're buddies.
I just wanted to say thank you, because the other morning, I started a nice hot fire in my fireplace, and all of a sudden, I heard a jet engine in my fireplace, and I had a pretty good chimney fire going on. And these guys responded real quick and, you know, saved my baby. Anyway, put it out, very special, appreciate it. Thank you for that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, our next, thank you, Chief. Our next update is from our third district supervisor, John Hascheck.
All right. Good evening, everyone. John Hascheck, third district supervisor, and thank you for your service to the community, all of you, and the people who ran for office too. You know, it's really, it takes a lot to come out on rainy, cold evenings and do what you do late into the night, so really, it's appreciated.
Thank you.
First of all, you know, that I wrote in my monthly column, and you might have read it, but if you didn't, you know that the county finances are looking better than we thought for a long time. We finally got real clear reports on where we are with everything, and there is the $11 million carry forward from last fiscal year. And so that was really good news. And the first thing we did with it was paid back the Measure B money that we had borrowed for the mental health wing of the jail that we needed. We needed $7 million for that, so we borrowed it like two months ago, and now we can pay it back. And so that frees up money in Measure B to do what it's meant to do, and hopefully, they'll be working on that soon. I think Tom Alman is on it, and we had a discussion about what some of the priorities should be, so I think we can do good things with that money still. Let's see, the library, you know, the engineers have looked at the roof of the library, and they found that it could hold the solar panels, and that isn't a big concern. And so now they're going to be putting out to bid for the roof, because they need to replace the roof first, and then do the solar panels. So with the way the RFP goes, it could be, you know, February or March before we actually get work started on it.
So we can expect that maybe February or March, we'll see a new roof going in place?
Yeah, and it depends on the weather and all that stuff too, so hopefully, early spring.
Okay.
And then the museum, that the board approved, you know, the transfer of it. And so right now, the gift shop and the front desk are both managed by the Friends of the Light or of the museum. And so that's good, because we want everyone to go to the gift shop now and buy all those neat things they have there. Let's see, the Heads Up program is working with the Willets PD, and that's to keep that information going about people who are in need, mental health situations. And so I'm glad that the Willets PD is working on that along with the county, and that's to share, you know, information about certain clients. And then the California Conservation Corps gave a presentation to Rotary. They were my guest like two weeks ago, and they gave a really, you know, showed exactly what was going on with the CCC, and they said that they could come back and do a walkthrough of the facility. So if anyone's interested, you know, I'll probably be arranging that for January or February.
We just took a, we just did a walkthrough.
I know, some of you did, yeah. But if there's others who didn't, you know.
Thank you.
Okay. And then the prescribed fires, you know, we've talked about that need for, you know, creating safer, you know, dealing with the vegetation abatement issues. They were doing that in Jackson State Demonstration Forest, and doing it as part of some of their studies. And certainly, it was bad timing for the inversion layer, the smoke laid down in Willets, and I was certainly getting a lot of calls. I'm sure you were probably too. And but really, we can see that, you know, we'll be safer because of it. And then, oh, the microwave system is almost completed. It will be completed in December, and that's replacing the old microwave system for emergency response communications, and that's on all the peaks, you know, Sanhedrin, Cato, and Laughlin. And so, you know, we're very proud that we were able to transition, because before we were using, they had to go to eBay to replace the parts, and some of those parts weren't even available anymore. So this is the new generation of technology, and it will hopefully provide better service for all of our emergency responders. And that's about it.
Any follow up on the caravan for dogs and cats?
Yeah, it's being built in Arizona, and so it should come within a month or two. And they did hire a vet tech, which was one of the crucial components of it. And they just, I think, I don't know if they have a vet lined up yet for it, but, you know, they're putting the pieces in place, and it should be within a couple of months.
Even if I'm not here, will you keep bringing updates? Because that's something the constituents have asked about.
Yeah, and all throughout the county, we need that service.
Yeah. We would have, we would have less requirements upon us in trying to find homes for animals that don't have homes if people had the means to get access to get their animals fixed. So, yeah, it's important. The other thing that I wanted to ask you about was the TOT. I know we spoke before about, quite a few times about it, and recently, I spoke to all of the motel owners here in town and kind of chatted with them about, you know, the impact that would have on their business. And, you know, just want to make sure that you're aware that the motel owners in Willets do not want to see that bid go up.
Yeah, and it turns out that Visit Mendocino is doing their studies and their outreach, and they have to have a vote, and they have to get 50% of the lodge owners to, they've scaled it back to just the lodge owners, and they have to get 50% vote to go forward with it. But really, I don't think they're going to get it. I heard they're at 30%.
And I think I shared with you concerns that we haven't seen Visit Mendocino infusing very much, if at all, many dollars into the inland community. Isn't just Willets that isn't, you know, seeing much benefit from the TOT, but Yukaya isn't seeing much either. Most of those dollars are going over to the coast, and there's nothing wrong with that, you know? The coast attracts visitors. It's a beautiful place, but we just want to see that the whole county is served with a TOT tax, if the whole county is going to participate in contributing to its tax. I know that the chamber receives a portion. There are, you know, there is some good that's done, but I hate to see when there's additional taxation without showing that there is, that they're going to provide an additional service. And the service so far, in my opinion, has been subpar for the inland community, so I'm just relaying what my constituents are telling me. I promise that I will continue to pester, if you call it that, and share with you that their concerns and lack of support for an increase in the bid. Yes.
I just wanted to echo that. Folks that I've talked to say that because of the economy or whatever the factors, that I guess stays are down this year, you know, in comparison to other years. And so I would just say it's not the time to be hitting these poor people up.
Yeah, and just for everyone's knowledge, the bid that we're talking about is a business improvement district, and so it is those people, you know, the lodges.
Taxing themselves.
Taxing themselves to create better marketing or whatever they do with it.
And higher taxation means it's less likely that people will be able to afford a Willes Stop in our communities, the higher taxes are, as we all know. So just wanting to make sure that I do my due diligence in advocating for them, and in turn, advocating for this, you know, the city. If we have fewer visitors here, then fewer people to eat in our restaurants and shop in our stores, and those tax dollars, you know, circle around and provide all the other services that we all enjoy, whether you're a business owner or a motel owner, yeah. So I know you'll work hard for us, John. I just wanted to, just to make sure that it's on your radar.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the updates. We always appreciate you coming each month and updating us on what's happening at the county level. And then I'm going to open it up to the public and see if there's anyone from the public that has a question or comment on our presentation. All right, hearing none, thank you.
Thanks, John.
All right, next order of business is the consent calendar, because we have no enactment of ordinances before us. We have the minutes of October 9th, 2024, and October 23rd, 2024. There have been some amendments to the minutes. Would you like to, for the public's purposes, could you state the amendments to the minutes that are before us?
Let me pull that email up that I sent out earlier today.
And then I believe that we had a comment from the public about a request for an amendment to the minutes as well.
There was a report of a change that needed to be made on page two. This is for the minutes of October 23rd. Councilmember Strong, the way it should read is Councilmember Strong agreed with all of the council member, all of what Councilmember Connie's comments were. Councilmember Strong added concern over the woodlands area west of Exley Lane and north of Highway 20 being included in the sphere of influence. Page three, just before the item 3B motion, moved by Strong, seconded by Connie, and carried unanimously to adopt resolution number 2024-59, general plan land use element, an element of the city of Willets. element of the City of Willets general plan, with an amendment to remove the Woodlands area from the sphere of influence west of Exley Lane, north of Highway 20. And then on page five, I originally had parts one listed, so it should read the local emergency operations plan, parts three and four were tabled to be brought back at a later date. Those were the three corrections.
Okay.
I'm just, on that last one, I think it would be more accurate to say the scope of work proposals for part three and four were tabled. It's not, we don't have a part three and four yet, but the item that.
Operation's scope of work?
Yeah, the scope of work for, yeah. That was the subject of that discussion. Thank you.
I have objections to that, do you? Any objections to that? All right, I'll open it up to the public. Any questions or comments on the minutes?
Yeah, the October 23rd meeting, there's two referrals to the use of the word recused. It says Robin Leeler released her disagreement with the use of the word recused when a council member has a conflict of interest regarding items on the agenda. I think more correctly, that should say a possible conflict of interest because these conflicts of interest are still a matter of debate, whether they are valid or not. And then again, it says, and that's on page one, at the very bottom of October 23rd's minutes. And then again, back here, it says on page four of October 23rd, Councilmember Strong agrees with comments made by Robin Leeler regarding having more discretion of the elected official as to whether they need to recuse themselves when an agenda item is identified as a conflict of interest. That also should say a possible conflict of interest. Thank you.
So could I ask a clarifying question? When you, real quick.
Sure.
We want to make sure that the record reflects what took place rather than correction in what we want it to say. So if we change the record, is your recollection that you used the word possible conflict of interest or do you recall saying conflict of interest? Just a matter of.
I did not use the word possible because I did not make a statement about recusals. I just pointed out that that was up to the person recusing themselves rather than being forced on them. So I would, yeah, if I was going to.
Okay, I'm just trying to, because we want to make sure it reflects the record, is all. Yeah.
Well, in that case, I'd have to rewrite the whole thing because it doesn't reflect exactly what I said. Yeah. So I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, we'll try to figure out what to do about that.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else from the public? All right, hearing none, I'll bring it back up here.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes with these stated amendments from both Lawrence and Nikki.
Okay.
I should have that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
Could you restate Nikki's change?
I think she said mechanical, right?
Nikki's change was, she wanted to have it updated to state that anything mechanical lasts up to 10 to 15 years, not just the clarifier.
Remember what it was, thank you.
All right, any other comments?
You know, I, I, sometimes the characterizations of public comments or even of council member comments are, what's the word? You know, they're paraphrased. So they're not always entirely accurate. We always do have the recordings. So if anyone wants to clarify what they actually said at the meeting, they can, they can check those. I have found that frequently, that, you know, it's, it's hard to reduce the minutes to something, if not hundreds of pages, where we're not doing a verbatim. So I think that the intent is, is there and that people can check the recordings if they want.
I think that, I'd like to add that I did add a sentence to the bottom of all of the council minutes that states for more information on the, and it'll say the date of the minutes, Willet City Council Minutes, please view the recording on YouTube. I did add that to every set of minutes. I now do, I think I've started that two months ago, Kathy. Great. So it does, it does mention that it's available on YouTube.
And the law doesn't require it to be very, very detailed. You put a lot of detail in there and to make sure that it's very transparent, so it is appreciated.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, I'll call for the.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. All right. Motion carries. Monthly activity reports, they're our number four S today. Those are generally at the second meeting and this month, there is, isn't a second meeting because of Thanksgiving. So you'll see those, I guess we won't see those again until January because we won't have a second meeting in December either. So there'll be lots to report. All right, next order of business is.
City manager, want to comment?
So if you're referring to the department monthly reports, they will be doubled up for December.
So we'll have them at the first meeting in December?
Yes.
Oh, so we won't have to wait till January?
Yes.
Good to know. Thank you. All right, moving on to city manager reports and recommendation. And I will turn it over to City Manager Bender for the next three items.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first item, item 8A, is to ratify a negotiated agreement between the Assistant City Manager and the City of Willets. This was presented to the council during closed session at the end of last council meeting. The terms are as presented to the council at that session.
All right, thank you. All right, any further questions or clarifications from council? You look like you have a question.
No, I'm just.
You're just processing?
I'm calm.
Okay. All right, anyone from the public?
Good evening, Tom Alman. Thank you. And this is a little uncomfortable because the person we're talking about is right in front of me, so Kathy, it's not personal, but I want to talk about this. I'm going to ask a couple of things. First thing I'm going to ask is after I present my points, I'm going to ask that this be put off until the new council takes their seats after the first of the year. I reviewed this and there's a lot of financial questions I have. And I did have an opportunity to meet with the city manager yesterday and I appreciate his time, but I still have questions and, and they're all financial questions. One of, the first is, is the personnel matter. So the question, this is an agreement, not a contract, but it goes to a person. And so does the job flyer, does the job position change where when the current Assistant City Manager leaves, is this agreement automatically going to be put into place for the new Assistant City Manager? We don't know that because this is an agreement between the city and specifically a person right now that's holding that title. And so it's, it's going to be a personnel matter that could, that's basically could end in litigation if, if you're concerned about this agreement, not a contract, following the position and not the person. As far as the financial part goes, the, it's, only because I've managed a lot of budgets before, I pay attention to numbers. And I know that there's a $250 per month car allowance to attend meetings at the airport. And that, just to let you know, that using the IRS rule, that equates to about 440 miles a month of a person using their car to go to the airport and back. Like, I honestly don't think that there's that kind of need for, and if the city doesn't, if the city must have a mileage reimbursement program for, for other situations like this, but that's $3,000 a year specifically for a car allowance. And if you look at the court decision, the Orange County Court decision, and I don't know the answer to this because it would have, you'd have to deal with a PERS, but this could relate to increased retirement benefits also, if, if the Orange County decision is, has not been addressed in this specific mileage thing. In last meeting you had, the management agreed to a contract, which was a very good contract. And the Assistant City Manager, in my humble opinion, certainly would fall within the realm of a management contract. And so what you're telling the other management contract is, you're important, we're giving you, we're going to give you a nice contract. However, the Assistant City Manager is going to be all by himself with an agreement, not a contract, an agreement, which is above and beyond what the management contract. And I just don't see that as, as being fair for all in the world of negotiations. And I've certainly been on both sides of the negotiation table for many years. So what I'm asking you to do is, and this is retroactive, you know, to back to July 1st. So this, if we put it off till the first of Jan, first meeting in January, it certainly wouldn't be any financial hit to the recipient of this agreement. All it would do is allow some of these questions to be answered and it would allow the new council to discuss it fully and find out if, if this is where we want to go. So I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? All right, hearing none, I'll close the public portion and bring it back up here to the dais. I know that there were some various concerns about the contract that was negotiated. And I just, I think it's important to.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, it's not a contract.
Sorry, the agreement.
Okay, agree with me.
Thank you.
All right.
The bigger issue I was going to get to is the city negotiates with different groups. The city has the right to negotiate with different groups. The, each group has leadership and they just, they put forth a proposal. We have a, we have a conversation that takes place and we come to an agreement. There was an agreement that the city council came to, put forth, and was accepted by the individual who has, who holds this position. And some of the things that were noted that were of concern, I know that I received a letter and there were some comments made in the public about things, for example, related to sick leave and other types of, of benefits, but those are all, those, many of those are already standard benefits that were approved years before and were already in place. I want to address one of the things you said about the car allowance because I, I think that, that it's worth talking about, whether or not the city should give anybody a car allowance. Well, the city, each department has a vehicle. So if you're in the water department, they have vehicles that they drive around. They're not driving their own vehicles. Wastewater has vehicles. All the public works have access to vehicles. At City Hall, there's one vehicle that sits out there. The police department drives it, the planning department drives it. It's not always available. If you, it's, it's often being used and we can't ask, we can't ask somebody who regularly has to use their vehicle for public business to, to walk or to reschedule meetings or why not. That just seems, it seems that a little unprofessional, honestly. And so I don't think that $250 a month, and keep in mind that when you drive your own vehicle and you're working for the city, you also have to sign a waiver. We're not paying their insurance. We're not paying if they get in an accident. You know, they sign a waiver on all that. They said, this is just for a flat $250 and I don't think that, in my opinion, that that's a large amount. And, go ahead.
I think they was brought up, the pers issue was brought up and we were told that it was not plausible.
He, he mentioned a, an Orange County decision. Jim, do you have any information on that?
I'm not prepared to speak about it.
Okay, because I'm, I'm not aware of, okay. All right. And then the other thing is, is that I've heard at the last meeting and I heard at this meeting, put things off, put things off till a new council's in place. How many times have we heard that government moves slow enough and you want me to sit here? I'm going to be honest, you want me to sit here and fold my hands in and do nothing for the last two months while we wait for, for ballots to be counted? No, there's, there's work to be done. People in the city expect services to be provided and continue to move on. We have, I've been part of this organization, as has Madge, for, I've been here for eight years, you've been here for 12 years. I think we're fully educated and capable, mature people who can make a, a decision that's in the city's best interest. And so for that reason, I'm prepared to make a decision on this matter tonight. Any further comments from council?
I just wanted to make sure that there was correspondence that was sent to all the city council members, that I don't think the public gets that. But it was raising some of the questions that Mr. Alman raised and some other ones too, that, that I think our mayor just alluded to. Some of that is sort of standard stuff, you know, like carrying over sick leave and carrying over vacation. Things like that are pretty standard across the boards. I don't think that there was anything exceptional being offered to the Assistant City Manager in that regard, but, but her raise would be slightly more than the general, the rest of the management group, but very, like a half a percent. And the car allowance is also on top of that. And so I just want to be transparent, that is what we're, we're talking about, the, the management group. And I think maybe the city manager might want to just explain that, why the Assistant City Manager was not in the group with the rest of the management staff.
I'd more than have to do that.
I just think it's important to understand the context. Thank you.
So looking at it from an internal state affairs, the management group, as they were preparing to propose, get their proposal ready for the negotiation phases, there was an internal discussion that was made and a decision was made that was presented by the management group to myself to remove the Assistant City Manager from the management group. That was a decision that was made because the decision recognized that the Assistant City Manager potentially during the negotiation phases would be assisting myself, our negotiator, Patrick Clark, and potentially our HR consultant at the time, Patty Francisco. And there was concern about conflict of placing one person representing administration but also being on the, benefiting from the decisions that were being expressed on the other side of the table. So in fairness and clarity, as we move forward, decision was made to remove the Assistant City Manager from the management group. And then what happened was, we focused on the management group, we went back and forth as negotiations happened. Ultimately, the agreement rested at 3.5. They had an opportunity to come forward, would further. At the time, they recognized that was what they wanted to accept. That was what was presented to the council. Council agreed to it. So then what happened was internally, we do evaluations. Evaluation was done on that Assistant City Manager based of the findings of the recommendation, of the review. That's how we got to this point for the cola percentage.
And I think it's fair to say that there was compromise on, on both sides. There are things and, and negotiations that maybe we wanted that we, we didn't get. And that's what negotiations is for, to, to work back and forth until you can come to a resolution on what you think is appropriate and fair. I do want to say though, that sending, sending requests for information is appreciated. Being able to look into and answer questions is appropriate and I do appreciate that. And I think that Mr. Alman asked some questions that, that are worthy of being asked as well. So I do appreciate the participation.
I think in the clarification of this, that it was brought up that, thank you, that it was not unanimous, it was four to one. Thank you. Thank you.
Would you care to comment at all about why you were the one?
I, I said that I would only do one thing, and that was heard very, very well by everybody there, as I said it two or three times. Okay, so I just wanted to clarify what we're talking about. Thank you.
I just want to add additional. The management group was presented with a one year, it was basically a temporary until we can get a financial, a financial component into a better perspective. So it was a one year, we expect the management group to come back within another year with a, another proposal increase. So it was a stopgap.
All right. With that, would anyone like to make a motion?
Yeah, public comment.
Are we going back to public comment?
You have a gentleman there.
With all due respect, Madam Mayor, my-
Oh, oh, it's not, hold on, it's not general procedure, but we don't have a big crowd here tonight, so I'm-
Well, I apologize, but my main question wasn't answered. And my main question is this for the position or for the person? And, and that's something that the council, the legislative body of the city, needs to think about, because of the unfunded liability of the cash outs, if it's any different, I mean, those funds aren't listed, those amounts aren't listed in the resolution which was presented last time. And so what I'm saying, when I was asking to put it off till December or till January, is because there are some numbers that are missing from the, the resolution, and is this for the person or the position? Because if it's for the position, then the human resources needs to change the entire job description and, and the, the money that they're going to get. I'm, I'm really and truly, now I'm not making this personal against Kathy, I'm telling you, there are some problems with this, and I'm asking the city council to put it off until January, and so we can have some questions answered. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak again.
Let me ask you a clarification question. So if the council put this off until next time-
Right.
If it was for a person versus a position, what would you vote if you were my position?
I would vote no. I would vote no, because no, gift to government funds does not go to individuals. And, and if you read the resolution, it says that next year, that a pay per performance kicks in, and it doesn't meet the, it doesn't list the compensation for the pay per performance.
If it was for a position, your vote would be?
For the position. So if this is for a person, absolutely no. So human resources needs to put their stamp of approval on this, and say this is for the position, not for the person.
And if this was for a position, what would your vote be?
I would, I would have to look at the numbers that are not listed anywhere. There's, there are so many numbers that are not on that form. I'm, I'm telling you, this is not a $9,600 a year increase in, in compensation, not at all. If you look at what the cash out is of the, the sick leave and of the vacation and the CTO hours and so forth, this, this is much more than $9,600. And so I could only vote on that after the human resources person gave us the answers to my questions.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right. With that, I bring it back.
You know, I think my original thing, and I'll just say that the concern I raised was that the car allowance not be personable, that I, I think with that, I would make my motion that as long as it's not personable, that I would make a motion to, to accept the agreement.
Okay. Do we have a second on the motion?
It seems like that, because I feel like there's some legitimate question being raised, and I don't really understand that, I can't say that. I do believe that, that, you know, in our closed session, we, we had a four to one vote in favor of this agreement, and I was, you know, I was in favor of it, because I think this is a very valuable position to the city, and it's very important that that person get compensated and feels appreciated. So I, I think I'm still tending to, to want to back up the agreement that we, that we have offered here, but I do feel like these questions deserve to be, you know, clarified and, and answered, and I, I don't have that information either, so I'm, I'm a little conflicted.
All right, I'll second the motion. We have a motion on the table, we have a first and a second. I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Strong.
Well, on the basis of what I just said, I think I'm going to vote yes, but I also feel like, for one thing, this is a one-year contract or agreement only, and if there are issues that haven't been resolved, they, they will be as we move forward into the next, next time. So I'll vote yes.
Stronsky.
No.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes, the motion carries three to one. We negotiated in good faith, we take care of our employees, and we're going to honor that. All right, moving on to item 8B.
Item 8B is a review of how the organization performed in light of the council adopted goals and the capital improvement project. So Leilani Shine with Land Logistics is going to present the, I don't know.
Doris, do you have the most questions for the presentation? Thank you.
I believe the PowerPoint has about six slides, five slides?
Roundabout, yeah. I kept a sheet.
Basically, this, yeah, the slides are, they highlight, this is a similar template that we have shown before to the council. This is kind of, you know, we're getting to the phase of year-end activity reporting, and this is one of those options.
Just on the first slide, that's the council.
Yep.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, council. Leilani Shine, contract planner with Land Logistics. Tonight, I'll be presenting your 24, 24 performance review, city council goals, and capital improvement plan implementation. This review includes two sections. So the first section includes a comparison of the agenda items that were approved by council during 2024, and that's compared with the progress in the council goals achieved by those adopted items. And then the second section includes a comparison of the implementation progress of the capital improvement plan, also compared to the city council goals and how those were adopted. So you can look at attachments A and B within the agenda packet. So on April 28th, 2021, city council adopted these goals as the basis of an annual work plan. The adopted goals are referenced in attachments A and D. So these goals, it's the more colorful table on the left here, they are broken out into different sections based on the department and the goal number. So this is the same format, as Brian said, that was used in 2023, we're continuing it on. And on this first slide, we're showing the first section of this review, which again described in attachments A and B. These are linked together by that last column that says item number. So if you're wondering how to sort of cross-reference between those, the item number is the same on both documents. So attachment A shows the progress of the adopted goals based on the department and the number of agenda items approved by council, and attachment B shows a list of agenda items in total that were approved by council and when they were approved. So just to give you a picture, this is the, the quarterly progress. So again, this is just illustrating the number of approved agenda items in each quarter for each department. The green is administration, the brown is committee development, the red is police department, and the yellow is services and facilities. To summarize, you'll notice the tallest bar on the right-hand side, the yellow, illustrates the service and facilities had around 15 agenda items approved by council during the third quarter, and the smallest bar on the right there shows that the administration department had one item approved during quarter four. And as you can tell, we're, we're not all the way through quarter four, so that's why there's not a lot of progress to be shown there. This is a graph that is showing similar numbers. This is showing the, the total numbers, so all the quarters combined for each department. So to summarize, the administration department had 27 items that were approved, committee development had 18 items, the police department had six items, and services and facilities had 35 items during 2024. Moving on to the second section of the performance review, this is attachment C and D. You'll notice that attachment D looks more or less identical to attachment A. This one is paired specifically with the capital improvement projects. So the capital improvement projects listed on attachment C show each capital improvement project its progress, and so if a project is currently in progress or has been completed, it will be listed on attachment D in that table showing the progress. And this one's a little different, it's not breaking it out by quarters, it's breaking it out by the fiscal year to match up with the capital improvement plan as it's laid out. So graphically, this one was not as interesting as the first graph. It's basically showing the capital improvement plan is, is mostly going to be enacted through service and facilities. So this graph is showing the council goals for service and facilities. You'll see the listed numbers on the bottom actually pair with the council goals themselves. And so the yellow bar is, is showing the fiscal year, 23, 24, or excuse me, 22, 23, the smaller bar, and then larger bar is 23, 24. So both attachments C and D reference this information as well. And then this is also basically same information summarized into one graph. This is the total number, the total progress for different CIP projects that are either in progress or in complete status during both the years 2023 to 2024 and 2024 to 2025. And that concludes my summary. Is there any questions about those numbers or how things were drafted as far as graphs and things like that? Or any other questions?
Any questions from council?
So if I can, one thing for the members of the audience here, I know some of the graphics were a little slight on the screen. You can download the, the packet from online, or we can have copies available in City Hall for tomorrow if anyone's interested. Thank you, Leilani. So a couple of items here I just want to highlight. We had a pretty successful year on large projects. We did the master tax share in agreement, so appreciate the support that the Board of Supervisors put into that effort and the ad hoc committee that was involved with that. The general plan update, which was a big lift for this organization, thank you, Dusty, you did a great job on that and your team. The wastewater solar project, which is gaining momentum, and that's going to be a good thing for the long term, at least 15, 20 years of the city. Payment preservation projects 23 and 24, so thank you, Walton Coler, for overseeing those. We're going to be looking at projects for '25, potentially for '26. And then the IT upgrades, which basically Kathy Moorhead has assisted with, with our IT consultant, Apex, as well as the Spring Brook deployment. And then the underground utilities, the groundwater abatement effort that also Mr. Coler oversaw. So those are some big-ticket items that we addressed, those items that the council identified back in 2021 as key items, and we were able to do that after three, three and a half years of scoping, budgeting, and putting together a proposal for the council to consider.
All right. For me, the big takeaway is that we had a vision, we put out a strategic plan on how we were going to accomplish those goals, and then tonight was really just about demonstrating that we've been actively working towards that, staying focused on our goals. And every time council makes a decision, we're always tying it back to a goal we set for ourselves, and staff does the same each time, they're working on a project consistently tying it back, and that way we're able to have a way to measure whether or not we're staying on track and where we need to work a little harder or focus our efforts, and it also drives our budget and how we're spending money, making sure that we're staying focused on those goals.
Um, just, you know, we are spending money, but staff likes to think that we're reinvesting into it.
That's a, that's a good way of putting it. That sounds like a dusty word, too.
Brian came up with that.
So, so Brian, once, I know that we've set these goals, this was our council that's here. When the new council's seated, will we have an opportunity to involve them in setting-
Yes.
-refining some of these goals? I know that getting the general plan launched and doing that and working towards that, I'm assuming that's still going to be on our ticket, so to speak, and-
Yeah, so, to enforce that.
So Dusty, you're going to be a part of that continuing, but some of the other things, I think will be an opportunity that, especially before the budget, to maybe do that.
So internally, what we're looking at is to organize a goal-setting strategic planning communication session with the newly seeded council, end of January, early February, so we can have that in place. It's going to be a facilitated discussion. Don't know all the details yet, how we're going to manage that, but it's going to be somewhat very similar to what was done in 2021. We want to look at the goals slightly different, maybe tie them a little closer to budgeting aspirations or limitations. I think some of our goals that we had here are very aspirational, and some we just could not even achieve with the current organizational capacity. But, you know, aspiration goals are a good thing. They basically set kind of the pace for this, the, the council to grow the, the organization as well as the community. So, yes, we are going to be looking to organize that event, and it'll be, you know, we're going to have to prepare materials on the staff side so we can present to the, the council, as well as getting feedback and dialogue going with the newly seeded council on what their aspirations are and goals for the organization. We haven't decided on the timeframe. These ran for about four years, which was good, but maybe the next one would be tied to a one or two year, and we could tie, you know, tie that closer to budgeting parameters.
That kind of a session is also open to the public?
Yes, ma'am.
That's correct. Okay. So that, it's a really good time for the public to weigh in, hear what, you know, an analysis of what staff is proposing and what council member, the newly elected council is thinking, but also weigh in from the public. So I think it's a really good thing to do periodically in any case.
You know, you had a good foundation for three and a half, four years. Now moving forward, let's see what we can build on.
Whether we have a new council or not, it's time-
Yes, it is.
It's time to take a look at the, the goals, and the new council will have that opportunity, and those of us that are in the public certainly can participate equally as well, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the-
I guess I should ask, open it up to the public, because there might be a member of the public that wants to comment on this item? Yeah, go ahead.
I am Robin Leeler. I, I feel lost in that presentation. I have no idea what the narrative is. There were a lot of words up here that I did not understand, and what I value about this city council is that everybody here and the staff usually put things in plain language in a story that we can understand. And this was the things on the graph, I'm good at reading graphs, but that did not have enough information to give me any knowledge of what it meant. Sorry.
I, I would, I would have to agree with you that the screen wasn't, it was very hard to read and understand if you didn't already know what was going on. If you look at the packet, it'll have some more information, and then if you have any more questions, Robin, you can, I'd be happy to meet with you, or you can meet with one of the city staff members and just go over it a little bit more in detail. But essentially, it's just, we had a plan, we made a plan four years ago about what we wanted to accomplish, and every time we made a decision or we had an item on the agenda, at the, at the end of the summary of every item, it said, it tied it back to which one of these goals, which one it had, they had to connect. Does that make sense? Like, we had an action item before us, we-
Like, we had an action item before us, we had a goal, we had a mission amongst ourselves that we would always make sure that they tied back to what our overarching goal was. And what she was saying was, it was percentages based on, basically, they were telling us, you met this goal 100%. You met this goal 50%. You need to do better. We did, we did really well. But the chart was very hard to see and, and understand. I agree. Are you still lost? You have that luck? No? Okay. All right, go ahead.
I want to thank all of you for all the hard work. And I'm new to town, but I acknowledge all your hard work. I have a question. With the newcomers, what's the legality of things has been approved on with the new vision of the newcomers that those things could be re-discussed?
So when they have their goal setting, well, at any council meeting, if there's an item before them, they all, until a decision's made, they can always change direction. And when they have their goal setting, whoever sits at this table will have, they'll be the ones that will set the goal, going forward with input from the public.
But all the goals that have been set and approved, can they be looked at again and changed or be evaluated?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That's what the new council will decide. Do we like this goal? Maybe we've only completed 50%. Do we want to continue working on this one? Or are there other things that are more important? That's what that council will have to decide.
Okay, thank you. But thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. All right. I'll bring it back here.
Okay. Thank you. So we're going to do some quick project updates, but before we do that, I want to introduce our new, or not so new now, our HR analyst, Kate Retschel. She has took the position, accepted the position that we offered to her. She transferred from Minnesota, but originally she has worked in Mendocino County. She has experienced
Kate, do you mind stepping up just so we can?
With the county. So. And it's been three and a half weeks.
Yes.
Yeah.
Hi, everybody. I'm so happy to be here and excited to help apply myself and help serve the community. And I'm just excited to learn and grow with all of you. Thank you.
Welcome.
We have a pretty elaborate work orientation plan for Kate. She's diving in on both ends or in the deep end with CalPERS, HR assistance, payroll assistance, working with the staff on all the various inquiries that they have related to their benefits, insurance plans. We have a, one of our local consultants is coming in tomorrow to offer staff information on a 457 investment program that their firm offers. So Kate is doing a wonderful job. Like I said, been here less than a month, but has been a valuable team member so far.
Will Kate have the ability to, will she have, I guess, somebody she can consult?
Yes. We have taken care of that. She, our HR consultant who helped us bridge the gap from Karen Stevenson's retirement to bring it onboard, Kate basically has been kind of showered, showered doing or following, yes, assisting Kate on various aspects of HR nuances, specializations. I think there's a weekly, there's a weekly or bi-weekly training sessions or discussions.
One to two times a week or as needed.
Yeah. So we have facilitated that into the orientation plan. And that is laid out for about a six-month window.
All right. Well, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I know Kate unfortunately has to leave, so I want to leave.
Thank you very much.
It's okay to step out. Thank you.
Next, we have three bullet points for upgrades or report updates on capital projects from Mr. Kohler.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Just some updates on some of the current projects we're working on. The 24 pavement preservation project is in closeout right now. Project's complete. We are finishing paperwork, certified payroll, warranty information. I will bring to the December meeting a notice of completion to approve and file with the county. That one will be done. School's quite happy. Underground utility project is moving along on schedule with Argonaut. They are in the last phase of testing, pressure testing the water lines, disinfecting them. And this week, by Friday, crews will have the first of the new lines hooked up on West Van and Mirror, and those will have their new water services in place and abandoning the old pipes that were there. They'll continue on all the other lines throughout the city. And then potentially, it will come into the holiday season with Thanksgiving. Argonaut crews will be doing all the paving work the first week of December. So we'll be getting new paving on West Van, Mirror, Madrone, and State Street. And they'll be doing that first week of December. And then we'll be able to close out that project mid-month and everything, and then we'll bring that to the January meeting for a notice of completion on that job. Bechtel Road PG&E sidewalk project, again, on schedule. The crews have gotten the majority of the sidewalks and retaining walls done. The sidewalk on East Hill will actually go into January. That's going to follow PG&E's 25, their budgeting. It won't fall into the 24. They'll get that done in the first week of January, February, the East Hill portion of the sidewalk. They'll be doing paving work in about two weeks, and I'll be putting out a schedule for the public on that with the road realignment on Bechtel Road. But they expect to have that job completed, except for the sidewalk on East Hill, end of December, and the road realignment will be done on Bechtel Road. And then January and into February, they'll finish the sidewalk on East Hill, and that will be closed out. So those are all moving ahead well on schedule.
Thank you for the spreadsheet that you sent over. It was very helpful in being able to tell constituents, you know, you can expect work on these days. I did have one follow-up question, though. I saw you were corresponding with Amethyst at the theater.
Yes.
Thank you. But I thought that we were trying to stay away from the Friday, Saturday, Sunday. When I looked at the spreadsheet, I thought that I saw that the work on
They're doing water hookup. They have to do it. It's the only way they have to continue to go. Yeah, it's going to be
And she's fully aware, is not going to impede on a show that
They've been given notice, yeah. It'll be before the end of the day, it'll be hooked up. They have it for an eight-hour period, but they expect to get it done by midday. And they'll all have water and stuff, yeah. Once they get started, they have to quickly follow through. And they'll have that whole area hooked up by the end of the week, yes.
So it's not the paving component?
This is just the water hookup.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
I saw that paving component was even
That's on the next, and on the paving component, there is priority. That's getting done at the beginning of the week. And so we will avoid a Thursday, Friday, and into the weekend, anything with paving that might impair some of their shows and everything, yes.
So Walter, let's take the opportunity. The paving for State, Madrone, Van, we're looking at the first week or so of December?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
We'll get notices out
We will.
Facebook and website.
Yes. They're going to have large crews up. They expect to get all those done within that week, weather permitting, yes.
Yeah. And I'm really glad that we didn't leave State Street with dirt right before the rink because that would have really been
Yeah.
Before they had the dirt, you know, blowing in the wind.
Right.
Now, you know, we've already seen flooding, so
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Neighbors are happy that there was not a temporary fix and there'll be a long-term solution there.
Correct. I don't know if any of you have any questions or, yeah.
Any follow-up questions?
I do. So I was wondering about that. I'm actually going back to the digital packet. There was a resolution for the acceptance of the summary of the goals.
Yes, I was going to.
Okay.
Okay, I'll come, I'll come back to that. Let me finish this one real quick because I want to give the public a chance to, to comment. Was there anybody from the public that wanted to comment on, on Walter's report about the 2024, or, I'm sorry, the pavement preservation? Okay. All right. Then we'll go back to the council, the performance review of city council goals and capital projects, including an assessment of the capital improvement plan implementation alongside the city council goals. I'm going to move to that item real quick, unless Jerry beats me there.
Is that the end of the?
I've got it. By approving the accompanying resolution, this annual performance review will serve as a reference for future budget or capital improvement plan project planning. So I want to be real clear on the resolution because, so let me just, bear with me, Lamoney.
So what the resolution is stating is that you have received the report from staff and you're accepting it. And the report was just a summary of our activities for the past year, items that were presented to the council for your consideration and action.
Okay, I'd like to move the resolution number 2024- resolution to the city council of the city of Willes to adopt the year 2024 performance review of city council goals and capital projects, including the assessment of the capital improvement plan implementation along with city council goals.
I'll second that. Can I comment before?
Yeah, you can comment.
I do tend to agree that the quantification of, you know, how many times it came up on agendas and how many items is not very elucidating, you know?
Yeah.
It doesn't really tell you a whole lot about the qualitative accomplishment of those goals. So it's fine as far as it goes, but it's, it's not very public-friendly information.
I know. It's kind of hard to rattle your saber or rattle your teddy bear out there and say, we did great.
Well, one of the things is, is those goals are not, you can't, how they're drafted and defined, they're hard to quantify.
Yes.
There's not a percentage. It's either you check that box and they're done, or it's a work in progress, or we didn't accomplish it. It's, that's how they're configured. So moving forward, we may want to think of, you know, adding a element of percentage towards completion if it's a multi-phase, maybe break it out into, you know, per-year accomplishments.
Yeah, I think your past reports on identifying the goals, you did more qualitative, you know? You'd have a column for where it stands
Yes.
Where, and I think that was much more user-friendly.
And it also included a schedule component, you know, you know, looking at it quarterly. We could take a look at going back and addressing that as we go forward.
Yeah, because it's true. I mean, the goals are sort of a necessity kind of umbrella
Yes.
Goals.
Yes.
Although the more specific they are, the more likely we are to accomplish them.
Yes.
So, yeah, I think this is all good, good information and including the statistical analysis is just one little tiny piece of that, but, but thank you for doing that.
For all those right-brained people who like all of the stats and the graphs. All right. We have a motion.
Add a second.
Add a second on the motion. I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. The motion carries for acceptance of the presentation, and we will move on to the next item.
Hi, Nate.
Yep. You have nothing more to add for?
No, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, okay. So Department of Recommendations, these are action items. authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Alta Vista Group to conduct a dispatch center technology assessment and develop a replacement plan in an amount not to exceed $34,000, supported by an authorized budget transfer to the police department fund 100.2000.65400 from the Major K Fund. And I'll turn it over to Chief Dewey, our interim chief police.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Chris Dewey. I'm the interim police chief for the city of Willes. Tonight, I'm here to discuss conducting a technology assessment, an inventory of our dispatch center and our technology that we have within the police department, and then develop a replacement plan for some of that equipment. I think it's important to give everybody just a little bit of background. The dispatch center is really complex when you walk in, and it can really be identified in four separate areas, and that helps people understand the dispatch center. It has basically your 911 equipment that you might, you know, you call on 911, the regular 911 telephone equipment. It also has the radio equipment that we have to communicate with our officers out in the field. And it has software that allows our dispatchers to reach criminal databases, the FBI and Department of Justice, and it allows our dispatchers to also track the officers where they are and what they're doing. It becomes a court record of their activity. And then finally, the dispatch center has a bunch of other stuff. It has chairs and desks, it has recording. So we were mandated by law to record all of this activity. And so everything in the dispatch centers really falls in those four buckets. And sometimes people say, well, the state pays for all of that. In reality, the state only pays for the 911 telephone equipment. That's all that they'll pay for. The other parts, the radio, the software, and all of the other equipment, we as a city have to replace on a regular basis. The reason that this is coming forward tonight is that some of our equipment in the dispatch center is really old. Matter of fact, it's, some of our equipment is over 20 years old within our dispatch center. Some of our equipment within our dispatch center, I'm sad to say, is that we've stolen from some of our spare equipment to keep our current equipment running. We've run out of spare parts for some of our equipment, and there are no more parts for the equipment. So we steal computer cards from one computer to keep another computer running to do that. So it is important that we begin to develop a plan to replace some of the equipment. Over this last year, we've worked as a, as a department to kind of estimate, try and get various bids from vendors on what it would be to replace some of the equipment in the dispatch center. Initial estimates are about $700,000 to replace our radios and our recorders and our software equipment within the dispatch centers. A lot of money. And as you can imagine, it's a complex project. It usually takes one year of planning and another year of implementation. It's not short, it's not easy to do, and you have to intermix all these different parts and have different experts talk to each other and bring everything together to be able to do that. Because the department is, currently has an interim chief, myself, and then there'll be another interim chief after me, there isn't someone to champion that project, to move it forward as we move forward. So it's important to have somebody that, a single person, one single throat that you can, that you can choke, somebody that is in charge and responsible for the overall project. And so the idea here is just, is to hire the Alta Vista Group. They're a communications expert. They've worked here in Mendocino County for years. They implemented, for the county of Mendocino, they implemented our next-generation 911 system, our system that allows us to use our cell phones to communicate with their dispatch centers. They're known to us here in Mendocino County. They perform excellent work, and they're familiar, most importantly, and they're familiar with our county and with working with the state of California so that we can leverage as much money from the state of California as possible and reduce our expenses locally to do that. So I approached the Alta Vista Group, and we put together a small plan for our dispatch center. It really has two parts. One is to do an inventory of the equipment we have now, and then to work with the state of California on what's available technology-wise and funding-wise to assist us, and then develop a replacement plan for the future to do that. And so they would be on site, their engineers would be on site and work with our people here at the city of Willes, and also work with the county 911 centers, the county of Mendocino 911 center, and their microwave system and everything, the radio systems for the county. And then we, after that, they would develop a plan that the council could consider for the replacement of some of this equipment as we move forward. So the proposal for you tonight is to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Alta Vista Group for a two-phase approach, the inventory and then a plan in place to begin to develop a plan to replace the dispatch equipment.
Thank you, chief. All right. Any questions?
You just, you said it's two phases. It's just $34,000?
In total, it's $17,000 a phase and 34 in total. In total, it's $17,000 a phase and 34 in total.
So the inventory and the recommendation, okay.
When Chief Dewey was putting this together, he reached out to me just to kind of get a historical perspective, and I've been retired now, this December will be eight years, and prior to that, I was chief for 13 years. And prior to me becoming chief is, let's see, maybe one or two years before that is when the radios were bought. So to put it in perspective, that radio system there, and in the time I was chief, I oversaw 911 upgrades twice, and I believe they may have done one after I retired, but when some of the folks there reached out to me and said, "What has been done?", I said, "Well, this is what I did, but I don't think anybody has kind of, you know, been there to kind of shepherd some of this stuff." And in the process, things got old, things broke, and so with the fact that we don't have any one person right now shepherding this, I think this is the way to go, because before we plunk down a lot of money for something, I'd like to know that it is needed or that there's money out there that we can leverage. Because I know state 911, sorry to correct you, Chief, but they will pay for things like some chairs and some things like that, but it's got to be 911-oriented only. You know, they'll pay for some desks that go up and down, or some, you know, some modular equipment, but it's not going to supply office supply equipment, that kind of stuff. It's all 911-related, but it's very specific to that. And there's a bidding process that you have to follow with the state, and you have to use approved vendors, and so in order to get their money. So it's not, it's very specific, and so having somebody to kind of advise the city and the next chief as to how to go about is important to my mind.
I think you make an important point, because I asked quite a few questions about this when I saw it on the agenda, because I didn't fully understand it. And I first looked at it and went, "34,000? What are we getting for 34,000?", and then when I heard the deeper explanation and the importance that comes with, you know, getting somebody who understands the how to get the grants or to find the revenue that can help support facilitating getting the things that we need for the PD, because obviously, General Fund or Major K isn't going to be able to fund the greater need of replacing all of these items. With that, I'll open it up to the public. Anybody from the public who would like to speak? Go ahead.
Is this all where, like, does it all interact with the fire system?
Yes.
Okay. Is that room with all the buckets?
Ma'am, you're asking some great questions. Would you mind stepping up there? Because there's a camera over here, and people from home, they won't be able to see you and may not be able to hear you as well.
I'm Barbara Mason again. I'm curious about the, is that the room used for the emergency command center? For, you know, if there are emergencies that happen?
Maybe I could, I think you may be confusing what Robin talked about, where if there was an emergency and everybody kind of sat around, that's different. This is where the dispatchers sit and where calls initially come in, and for fire calls maybe are sent to Cal Fire from here, or to the ambulance from here, or to CHP, depending on whether they originate here or not.
Okay.
And also where officers locally are dispatched.
Where is the command center for emergency contact?
When you say command center...
If there is an emergency in Willets?
Well, there's an EOC that could be activated, and that could be there at the police department, or they believe the fire department built something that could be used. It's not something where the general public's going to go to, but it may be one where folks go, but this is where the dispatchers...
I was a cert member in Norfolk, and I was very involved with the emergency command center there.
Okay.
During the last major fire, it was over at the Willets Police Department. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Did you have a call in?
No.
No? Okay. All right, anyone else from the public?
Robin Leeler again. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, I'm going to bring it back up here to council. We have an item before us to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement with Alta Vista Group for $34,000. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second.
Just wanted to comment is that in the future, if we know of something where the equipment, well, which we do, you know, equipment needs to be replaced, and in some cases, it's 10 years, in some cases, it might be 20 years, I wonder if we shouldn't be building into our budget a kind of a, how to pay for that before it hits us? Because obviously, we're talking about replacing something that's been around for 20 years, and it's going to be very costly, and it'll sort of hit us all at once instead of...but I totally agree with this, you know, getting a handle on it and doing it, because...
Well, that was part of the changes we made when we did our last budget. We talked about the building, remember? We talked about having a replacement plan for lots of things. There are so many things that still need to be replaced, that we can only put a certain amount of money into that kitty every year.
I just wasn't expecting this one, but here it is.
This one caught your off-guard. All right. Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor, agree?
Yes. The motion carries 4-1 to authorize the city manager in an expenditure of $35,000.
It carries 4-0.
Sorry, I said 4-1, my apologies. 4-0. I was not even here. All right. Moving on to Item 9B, informational discussion on a request for a proposal, RFP, to compose an urban tree ordinance to implement the 2022 Urban Forestry Management Plan and expand the urban growth forestry inventory. Our presenting staff member is Logan Shine.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. I'm Logan Shine of Land Logistics. I'll be presenting to you the exploratory discussion for the development of an RFP for an urban tree ordinance, as well as expanding the urban tree inventory on behalf of the Administrative Department. Now, the urban forestry, speaking of 2021 council goals, this was adopted in September of 2022, and it gave the city a path forward, a plan to approach managing the city's tree inventory and managing the urban forest overall. What we need to do is to finalize an urban tree ordinance, which was actually provided, there was a draft provided in the plan, and what we need to do is refine and expand sections of the UTO with public workshops. We need to develop, the city needs to develop that urban forestry council role and bylaws of just a citizen urban forestry advisory council, and phasing in the urban tree inventory expansion. We could plant trees in previously identified sites, increase urban tree inventory measurements for accurate management, and develop a phased approach for public workshops. Now, the UFMP technological assessment, this has accompanied the urban forest management plan as a toolkit for actually getting this plan moving forward and enacted. And an adoption of a UTO, an urban tree ordinance, would actually serve as a legal framework to manage and expand, manage and protect the urban forest. Now, this would include components to enact the UFMP, such as a draft urban tree ordinance, which would create an urban forest advisory committee, would actually define staff authorities, and it would define nuisance abatement and removal conditions, among a few other things. It would also address tree and sidewalk conflict solutions, which is methods and materials and strategies to reduce sidewalk damage and enhance urban tree health. It would recommend a planting list, and also recommend trees that should not be planted. And this urban tree ordinance, if drafted and adopted, would actually enact the 2022 Urban Forest Management Plan and the technical assessment that was invested in by the city. Now, this supports the 2021 council goal of becoming a Tree City or pursuing Tree City USA recognition. It provides a strategic roadmap for attaining Tree City qualification requirements, such as creating a tree ward, so the urban forest advisory committee, setting management priorities and policies for tree care ordinance, or drafting and adopting an urban tree ordinance, as well as funding an urban forest program as described in the Urban Forest Management Plan. They recommend doing $2 per capita for the City of Willets to put in for doing structural pruning and maintenance of trees, and that would be around $11,540 set aside for that. And this would also, as part of the urban tree ordinance, it would address the urban tree inventory by defining it. In our Urban Forest Management Plan, they've defined the Willets Top 10 genera, or genus of trees, so, you know, oaks, maples, ash trees, things like that, just overall, not species-specific, but they recommend that we shouldn't have 10% or more, you know, more than 10% of any specific tree genera in the city in order to maintain urban forest health, make the city urban forest resilient to climate extremes as well as pests and disease. With the current urban tree inventory, they describe corkus as being 34%, well over that 10% recommended, and there's also maples at 15%.
What is the 34%?
Oh, that would be 34% of our current inventory.
What, what trees?
Those would just be oaks overall, any type of oak. So it could be a value oak, black oak, you know, whichever oak. That is just very generic. But then when it comes down to the top 10 species, they generally recommend being lower than 10% and averaging around 5% for most of the species that would be represented. And as far as the species composition goes, we do have about 30% of value oak, we have about 11.5% pear trees, 7.5% Oregon ash, and it moves down the list. Sorry? And now, the current measured canopy accounts only for 16% of the total urban tree inventory in the city. Now, as far as, from a management perspective, we're working with a small sample size, and we'll be making, you know, we would stand to make drastic decisions with an urban forest advisory council advising staff on which trees are removed, which trees are preserved Right now, this map right here shows you the same section of Willets. It's north of Franklin Avenue, just by the railroad tracks. The US canopy data, the US Forest Service canopy data is indicated on the left side of the screen. All the green locations are canopy-covered. Granted, some of the lines that move a little more meandering and are not straight in this represent river riparian areas with riparian vegetation, which would not be counted in this inventory. And on the right side is the, the small yellow spots are actual inventory trees for the City of Willets. And this also follows down, south of Franklin Avenue, you know, US Forest Service canopy data is represented on the left, and on the right is the, and yellow icons are the actual current urban tree inventory that we, that the City of Willets will be poised to make management decisions on. Now, for the phased expansion of this inventory would actually be in line with the Urban Forest Management Plan goals to increase the tree canopy cover across the city and achieve 22% citywide canopy cover by 2050, developing an annual planting plan and evaluating and adjusting annual planting goals. Now, the expansion can include surveying new planting locations and the inclusion of existing street trees that can be inventoried. What we need, moving forward in this, and with your input, is what the city would like to include the public in on this, whatever RFP we write. We do need to finalize this, and it's a great opportunity for public engagement, public education. It's an opportunity to define the role of an urban forest advisory committee. It fulfills the requirements for Tree City USA designation, which would actually make the city competitive in grant programs and notice of funding opportunities for future work in the urban forest. And it defines the expansion of the urban inventory, which could be further defined with public input. And it's also an opportunity for public tree planting. What would council like to see moving forward?
Go ahead.
Logan, it's my understanding that Cal Fire, I believe, is either releasing or about to release, or has released their, I guess, their state responsibility area, urban interface maps for communities?
Those have been released, the live map is not active.
Okay, and so my concern is that whatever altruistic plan we have for our Tree City, that the driving force may be that, and this is going to affect insurance rates out there, that whatever we do needs to kind of parallel what the state's doing, so that, I mean, already in town, there are people that can't get fire insurance because of where they're at, even within the boundaries of Willets, and they have to go to the state fund. And so whatever we propose, I think we need to incorporate some of that, because I don't want to say, "Great, we're a Tree City, but your insurance rates are through the roof", because we unintentionally, I guess, I guess advise people to do things that they shouldn't be doing, and in contradiction to what their insurance is going to tell them. So I guess that's the only concern I have, that any RFP that we parallel what the state's put out, so that we're not giving out the wrong information.
And through the chair, may I address that question? Would council like to see something along the lines of, I know that it is a newer practice to include urban wildfire planning in some of these? Would that be a desired component of something like this?
I think it's the new reality.
Okay.
That's my thought, I'm just...
No, I agree, I agree with you as well.
And as far as people being able to address maybe problem trees on their property that could be a fire hazard or other type of hazard, getting an urban tree ordinance enacted would actually give staff authority to, you know, assist the public with either a permitting process to remove it, or to even just be able to declare something a nuisance tree and slate it for removal if needed. But it actually gives the city a little, it puts shoes on the feet of the Urban Forest Management Plan.
It said in the summary that the City of Willets receives grants from California Department of Forestry, Fire Protection, and how much did they contribute?
Off the top of my head, I believe it was between $250,000 and $270,000. The total was around $325,000, with Willets contributing $86,000.
So that'll pay for the whole thing?
That was to, that initially paid for the Urban Forest Management Plan, the technical advisory, the initial inventory, and the public engagement. So that money has been spent on the Willets Urban Forest Management Plan, but it is not enacted.
So the money, the $250,000 is up to the City of Willets to do this?
That's been spent, and now we have to...
That's over and above that.
That was what was spent to get the 2022 Urban Forest Management Plan, yes.
Okay. Somewhere in here, it says that this is direct, that 125 is of urban tree design, and then add another $100,000 for arborist work.
I apologize, I misunderstood the question. Yes, these are American Rescue Plan Act funds that we... Yes, these are American Rescue Plan Act funds that we have available right now. We had $125,000 available for urban, for expanding the urban tree ordinance, as well as $100,000 for any arborist work that might need to be made.
So you, what I'm trying to get at is, how much money is the city of Willets going to be stuck with to do this? That's probably, it's probably a grooved question, but what I'm saying is, you know, I mean, I'm not going to sign up for something that is that kind of money.
Okay.
I'm going to just let city manager answer the question.
So, yes, so the agenda summary notes that the project right now, the preliminary scope is, we put in overestimate, it's about $125,000 that the council approved through the ARPA project budget list. So you have already allocated out of your 1.1 million that you received from the federal government, you have agreed to put 125 at this, for this project.
So, the money that we got from these people that I just mentioned has been spent?
The grant funding has, yes.
Okay, so what you're asking for is to, when we approve this, is for the city of Willets to come up with the rest of it? Is that not correct?
There are no grant funds available at this point in time.
Okay, what I'm saying is, how much money is the city of Willets going to be, have to pay for this if we, okay?
We have received $1.1 million in ARPA recovery funds from the federal government. The council has agreed to allocate 125,000 of that to do a urban tree ordinance, to implement the provisions identified in the Urban Forestry Management Plan that the council adopted back in '22.
When we had the ARPA funding meeting, that's what the money we're talking about spending.
Okay, so, so everything is covered except $100,000 for the arborists?
No, that, the ARPA project list also identifies up to $100,000 allocation for an arborist, too.
Okay, so, let me get this straight. So everything here is paid for with a grant?
With federal monies, yes.
And we have all of that?
That is correct.
So when we say we're going to spend this kind of money, it's not going to cost the taxpayers a dime?
This did not come from the city of Willets proper, no.
Your federal money has been.
I don't understand that.
Gray Larry, please don't yell at me. I'm trying, because it doesn't seem that you understand about the ARPA money, and so I'm trying to clarify.
That is correct, I don't understand it, that's why I keep asking these things. So, my, my thing is, that it didn't say in this, to my knowledge, that, things that I read, that it's all paid for.
That is correct, it does not state that this is paid for, but this is money that will come out of the American Rescue Plan Act funds provided by the federal government.
Okay, so the city people that, and the city of Willets aren't going to have to pay any money for this?
No.
Okay, thank you, that's all I need to know.
Thank you.
Can I ask a, so, just because we put an RFP doesn't mean that we would be spending the whole amount that we allocated for this?
That is correct.
Do you expect that, that it would cost what we've allocated this? I guess sometimes I feel like, in government, we say, "We've got this much available," and consultants come out of the woodwork and want to help us spend the money we have out there.
The risk of an increased cost would be in the public engagement, but we would like to improve that this time around, because in the Urban Forest Management Plan, we had respondent number of 79 to draft that plan and craft it. So if we have, if we can, you know, if we do spend 125,000, it would be including the people of Willets in on these decisions. That is, that is what we would max out on, is including the public.
Well, we want to include the people, but I guess it's kind of like, you invited me over to your house to tell you how I think you should spend your money to paint it, and when I leave, you've done spent your 125,000 plus another extra, and we, I guess, from our end, and maybe to clarify Larry's point, we don't want the city of Willets to be stuck with extra over and above what we maybe bid and hold for this potential project.
Understood, and, and if I can address that concern, the urban tree, most of the heavy lifting was done with the previous grant money and the city's investment in the Urban Forest Management Plan. We have 85% of an urban tree ordinance already drafted. It needs to be refined for the city of Willets to work for the people of Willets. That, I couldn't imagine it going that high, but I would rather have the money in case we, in case council wanted to shape the scope of this any further.
Madam Mayor, may I address something?
Yes, I have some questions, I was holding them until.
So, if I can summarize where we are with the budget. We overestimated this budget to complete a draft document, and Logan Schein has correctly identified, we have the bones of a document ready that we can utilize. We need to flesh it out, refine it, and present it to the public. The $125,000 is an overage, because we knew this type of project is going to require and should have significant amount of public engagement. We overestimated the budget to, public engagement on any process or any project is very expensive. So there, because you bring in people, you know, time, meeting with the public, facilitating meetings, getting materials organized, so that's where the budget has been allocated for.
Have you asked, do you have any follow-up?
Yeah, I just, everybody keeps, all I want to know is from you and Mr. Bender, is that it's not going to cost the people in the city of Willets any money?
If we, the budget that is proposed.
I want those if we, yes or no?
The money has been allocated through the federal.
That's all I need to know, thank you very much.
Councilwoman Strong?
Two questions, there was one slide early on there where it said something about $2 per capita. It kind of, that's not a tax, that's not a new, we're not asking everybody to throw in $2 each, it's, what was that $2 per capita?
What that is, is to show you that what we're enacting through, if we pursue this urban tree ordinance, and with that tree ordinance, we create an Urban Forest Advisory Council, that is two of the requirements to become a Tree City USA. The other two requirements are council actions, and that would be to budget $11,540,000, or $540 annually for tree maintenance, as well as having an Arbor Day proclamation annually. So, so this.
So that would be some city funding in future to implement the.
To, to, to achieve the Tree City USA goal, yes.
Okay, so that, that was, I think that's, just to understand what's involved, so the contract, or the RFP that you're wanting feedback on, is that the cost of that is going to be covered by the ARPA allocation that we already talked about, and also arborist services? Is that a one-time arborist services, or is that ongoing?
This would be one-time depending on what the council identifies as a need, or what is identified through public engagement as far as the urban tree ordinance, as far as the urban tree inventory is concerned. If there's expansion, or if there's work that needs to be done in specific areas of the city, the arborist work would be for the physical, actual physical tree work.
And I was a little, wasn't clear, when you have the two maps side by side, the yellow dots for the inventory look like a very, very, very tiny percent of the total. Is the inventory?
16% of the city's canopy, so.
I was only really looking at the city's trees, not public's trees, is that right?
The Urban Forest Management Plan does define, it does extend public policy to private property as long as it is in the public right of way. So, for example, if there's a city tree that is blocking signage, or maybe blocking a road, that, those are exceptions. But we, we actually do need, it is required, survey responses in the Urban Forest Management Plan did, did indicate that there was an appetite at the time for managing or expanding the urban tree inventory more along private property, which it already is on private property, on Commercial Street, on Bechtel Street, as well as Mendocino, West Mendocino as well.
Okay, I guess I'm just a little unclear. So right now, there has been an inventory, and it only has identified 16% of the actual number, or that area of trees in the city. Is that 16% then focused on trees that are on city property, or the ones that are along on the front place?
Currently, it is both. Would you like me to pull up the images, or?
Well, I guess I'm not clear how much of the proposed tree ordinance that we would eventually get out of this whole process, is it going to also include privately-owned property trees?
Generally, that is the case with an urban tree ordinance, but that is where we would like the public to really be involved in this, because it, it does affect private property.
Yeah, okay.
Can I ask a question? So Logan, as part of that public engagement, let's for the sake of argument say that this crowd of folks here shows up and says, "Hey, we love this, we love what you're doing, but I don't want you telling us that we can't cut our trees down," or whatever, that's part of that public engagement, right?
Exactly.
Or, "We want you to do this," or "We want you not to cut certain trees," or whatever, as part of that public engagement.
That is correct.
All right, and just because we have ARPA funds that we've allocated, let's for the sake of argument, it, that only $50,000 is used for this plan, and we have extra, we could come back and reallocate that money. And we do have a certain period of time that we have to spend that money. We don't?
We already allocated by the federal government.
Oh, okay, so we could then reallocate that money for, so if we wanted to set aside for the sake of argument, because I mean, an arborist is something that the city would love to have on staff, but if we had the ability to have money set aside for arborists down the road, at least for 10 years, to help us, we could take some of that residual money and use it for trimming some of our trees that we've had issues with, or whatever. I'm just kind of throwing this out.
And you're, that's correct, and if there's money left over from that, when the city does, you know, when the city does qualify for the Tree City USA standing, that actually makes the city competitive for staffing rights and things like that. So we could expand with, with the federal funds that are already available, but also future funds.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, I'm going to open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public that wants to speak on this matter? Robin, and then Tom.
Yeah, I have a lot of questions, and I really love the idea of a urban forest, and it's not coming clear to me yet. I, I think maybe what I need to do is sit down with you for an hour and just ask all my questions, because I, I, yes, I'm wondering, how much of this is, I grew up in Palo Alto, and it is a city when I was growing up in the 50s and 60s, where you could stand up in Hoover Tower and look over Palo Alto and see nothing but trees. You didn't see the houses. Same thing for Oslo, Norway, the capital. You, you go up on the hill, and you just see trees, you don't see houses, and it's beautiful. I think there's a different, I'm also wondering, how many are city trees? Because in Palo Alto, every street when they build houses, they put in trees automatically, and then the city maintained those trees as part of their normal thing. So I think this differs from it, because we don't have standing trees. I interpreted the two maps as saying, okay, here's what it looks like from the air, there's a whole lot of tree canopy, but the part that actually is city trees, I think that's what you were asking, is, is a small amount, because I know, I don't have any city trees in front of my house, but I have, I actually have about 450 trees in my yard right now. That includes apple trees, pear trees, 10 different kinds of fruit, and I, I'm trying to decide, does that count as urban forest, or are we just talking shade trees? So, yeah. I would love to talk to you more and just clarify that, and I'd love to be on part of the public committee.
Okay, thank you.
Evening, Tom Alman, your chart on me, good for you, good for the city. Couple of questions, on page two of your 16-page document, I'm going to read a sentence here. It says, "Therefore, the purpose of the ordinance is also to safeguard the city's urban forest by providing for the regulation of the protection, planting, maintenance, and removal of trees in the city." It doesn't say public trees, it says of trees in the city, and I think we're going down, while I cert, I think this is a great idea, I think what Councilwoman Gonzalez was bringing up regarding, I'll say it, property rights, certainly seems to be something that needs to be taken into consideration here, because you're talking about the city's regulation of planting trees. Really and truly, you may want to think about rewording that phrase, where it could be city trees. I hope no one, I hope there's not going to be the tree police that are going to tell people what trees they can plant, what trees they can't, because it follows on, on page 10, where it talks about the, the trees have to be maintained if it's eight foot above a sidewalk and 14 foot above roadway, which is great, I just want the council to realize there's a liability involved with this, of making sure that your transportation road department also maintains city property trees eight foot above sidewalks and 14 foot above the roadways. And I don't know if that's regulation now, but you're putting something in liability regulation with, I'm not saying I don't support this, there's some wordsmithing that needs to be done on here to decrease the liability from the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, you make some very good points that I agree with as well. Anyone else?
I have another comment.
Did she have any timeline, I think?
She had about a minute.
Okay, go ahead.
I just have a general comment about trees that may need to be removed, and I would like to see an ordinance that particularly protects native trees that are old heritage trees, older than the person wanting to cut them down. Too many times, I've seen neighbors cut things down that were really beautiful, because, "Oh, I don't like that kind of tree." And I would like to be able to preserve something, like if it's a redwood, an oak, those deserve special protections. I don't think we have to protect every tree in a yard. People, landowners should have some leeway.
I hope that clarifies.
Anyone else from the public? All right, Councilwoman Stransky?
On this, are they going to, you said that there's a group of people that will get together and figure out whether you can cut the tree or not cut the tree?
And that would be defined in the urban tree ordinance under the Urban Forest Advisory Committee. The bylaws scope of that committee would have to be drafted with public input.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Strong?
Just, I think it's, even with a few comments here from the public, but when we get into public participation in this, there's, there's a real potential for controversy, especially to the extent that the ordinance is going to try to guide private owners on what they can do, you know, with existing heritage trees, or whatever. I mean, I kind of also tend to want to protect the, the old growth trees that we have inside city limits, even if they're just on private property. I don't want private property owners to cut down these beautiful trees that we all, you know, cherish. And there's, you know, there's an argument on both sides of that, just like, that's my property, I can do what I want. But I think we just have to anticipate that that's part of the whole public process, is how far does that regulatory. is how far does that regulatory part of an ordinance go? Does it, you know, how much does it affect private owners? How much is it, you know, restrict, for example, bringing in foreign, what do you call them, invasive species? You know, we really don't want people to plant an invasive species that's going to end up affecting their neighbors and the health of the other trees. So, you know, this is a typical dilemma in governing, is how, where does the public interest, where's the line between the public interest and the private owner's rights lie? There's a squishy line there. And that's exactly what, with this process, hopefully, we'll wrestle with that question and come up with recommendations. And then the city council at that time will have to decide, you know, what is appropriate. I think the process is what we need to do. We need to go through a process and find out, you know, what are the, what is the recommendation of the arborists? What is the recommendation coming out of a public process?
So the decision to forest, as I understand it, and just looking for clarification, is whether or not we're going to allocate the 125, up to 125,000 of ARPA funding so that we can finish the last 15% of this urban forestry project, planning project, is that correct?
Correct, because that will, that will actually put teeth to the Urban Forest Management Plan. And many things that have been discussed here are addressed in the Urban Forestry Management Plan.
Okay. So I understand what the objective is, and I'm prepared to vote on it. But that being said, I think that, it's not anyone's fault, but I think that the whole project of planning cost way too much. Clearly, I was never, I was never happy with the cost. I'm glad that our portion isn't the entire portion. And I wasn't actually in support of allocating 125,000 of ARPA funds, although ARPA funds don't come from city taxpayers, they do come from us as taxpayers. And I would have liked to have seen those tax dollars used for, very specifically, like, for example, reproot and maintenance of those trees over there. You know, we went and looked at those trees, and we knew that, we know that those trees needed to be addressed, and there were other trees. So it was my hope that we would see some physical work being done with those dollars. But I, hold on, I respect the fact that the majority of the council gave a different direction. And because the majority spoke in a different direction, I am going to honor that and move forward. Now you can, go ahead.
Oh, and that is partially why we're here, is to ask about the scope. If tree maintenance should be part of this, that can be included.
Right, but it won't, but that 125,000 isn't going to, isn't going to get the work done. And what I'm saying is, what I really wanted to see was the physical work be done with the funds. That's another matter that's already been decided, and there was a majority of council that gave this direction. So in no way am I criticizing that. And I have shared, I share in some of the thoughts that I don't want to see the city encroaching on private property rights. I'm very much about protecting private property rights as well, so. But that'll be a matter for the, for the public to give input as we move forward, if the council so chooses, to put forth this planning project.
I just wanted to say, one of my wishes would be that we use some of this money for, or some of our arborist money, or some of this for our current trees. I mean, the recrobes are a beautiful asset, and I would love to make sure. I think, Logan, you weren't here, but when this happened, but apparently way before us, there were some bright folks that sought, some specialists who said, to save our trees in the park, we should put cement in them. And apparently, that just exasperated some of the rot, and then they had to come in and cut them down, because they became hazardous. So having some true experts try to save our trees, or help cut what we need to down there and trim, or save, would be important to me as part of this.
As part of the plan.
Part of the plan.
Plan.
And I also want to go on record as saying, I don't think there is an old growth tree in this city. Okay, because I just from, well, we can say older, but old growth redwoods don't exist in this city. They were all cut down years ago. And so we could, what's that phrase? Putting lipstick on a pig, but it's still a pig. And it's a second, or third, or fourth growth redwood that's out there. So just wanted to go on record and say.
It's going to be a hot topic, I'm sure, when it comes before the public. Yeah. Okay, we have, we know what the task ahead of us is, and are, does anybody feel compelled to make a motion?
I think this is just a discussion.
Yes.
It was just a discussion. Okay, do you feel as if you've been given sufficient direction?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
I just want to, building on what Mr. Allman said, Logan Shine, his roots of forestry education has come through tonight, so thank you. He's a forester by academic training.
If I could also address, I understand the hesitancy in doing this, and that is why we're asking professionals to do this, that specifically focus on the tree work. And it's not me, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. All right, moving on to city council announcements, communications, and reports. I'll start with Councilmember Stransky.
I don't have anything, because I missed the meeting for water and wastewater.
All right, Councilmember Strong?
Okay, yes. First of all, the Solidness Management, it's already met October 31st. And I think, man, somehow I feel it's not going to be this week. But they did not have adequate information on which to look at budget at all. And they admitted that they didn't. And they said they're going to work on it. And they now set a meeting on December 12th to bring a more adequate analysis of what the budget is and what it's being used for. And that happens to be the day after they might be changing council members. So I'm not sure yet whether I will be able to attend that meeting as a council representative. But I am very interested in turning the page on that, because I have not been satisfied with the information coming to the commissioners and challenges of the Solidness Management. That's one report. But other than that, nothing happened at that meeting. The Economic Development and Financing Corporation met on October 17th, and their loan program is quite robust and doing very well. And they are getting CDFI approval to get federal funds. So they're doing their mission very effectively. It seems to be very well run. The Board of that, or the representatives from the different jurisdictions, is, has gone from 21 members down to 13. So each participating jurisdiction just gets one representative. And that's simplified the administration of it. And they now have a new president, yeah, President of the Board, Lieutenant Patterson. So that was a very uplifting meeting. They're doing very, oh, two of their loans recently are here in Willets. One of them is the theater, the Royal Theater, which is a very substantial loan to help the new owners kind of refurbish their program. And the other one is an enterprise called Art Effects. And they make aluminum bases for artwork. Instead of the traditional canvas kind of artwork, they work on aluminum, and they're serving an artist community, I guess nationwide, with this kind of new technology that's very more durable and allows a lot of different kinds of experimentation in the artwork. Okay, the third agency that I represent is Sonoma Power. They met on November 7th, and the next meeting is on December 5th. So I will be able to attend that one. And on November, they reported that they are part of all of the Community Choice Aggregates, which are public entities that provide an alternative to PGE, to the utility, the main utility company. Sonoma Power is one of the leaders in that state, right, aggregation of community choice providers. They have now kind of taken the lead in procuring power. They do more procuring of power than PG&E does. So they're, they're working together to create policies for how they do that in a way that lowers our energy costs, that works towards climate protection, that supports local investment, and also provides community benefits, that also looks at grid reliability, and that looks towards trying to have a plan for phasing out fossil fuel and nuclear powered electricity as much as possible in as near future as possible. So they're continuing to be very cutting edge and representing our customers in the tradition of electricity.
Thank you.
Been fun to work with them. I've learned so much.
All right, Vice Mayor?
Monday, November 4th, I attended the LAFCO meeting. And at that meeting, they swore in RAGDA Zachariah as our new public member. And amongst the things we discussed there, where we had a public hearing on the Ukiah, City of Ukiah Western Hills Annexation and Sphere Amendment. They brought in, or they're going to be annexing area up in the Western Hills, some housing and some open space. And then we had a workshop on Irish Beach Water District. And it was where we had a chance to discuss and talk about their sphere of influence, and their, it's called an MSR, that Municipal Service Review. Nothing changed for them, basically. It's kind of static. Some of these agencies where they're not growing anymore, but they're just launching, it's kind of a check-in to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. Amongst the things that entities have to do these days, as much as they may not like it, is have things like websites to inform the public. And also, a lot of government agencies that stopped meeting during COVID have to start meeting in public again, unless, and have to follow certain rules. So that's something that comes up, too. Some of these agencies out there are still meeting remotely, finding out, so. And then the other thing I did was attend the Water, Wastewater Systems Committee meeting that Larry was talking about, that he couldn't make on October 25th. And we got an update. I think Brian Wallace from EBA gave a brief on the groundwater program to discuss recommendations of the annual groundwater report. And, let's see, Steve Fire Marshall approved the CCC project out there, which was kind of nice, they had to do some testing. And apparently, what I heard is that when they did the testing for their fire system, it also caused a little brown water when they used that. And talked a bit about the clarifier there, and I think that's about it. Some other things, but a lot of them were the same. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. I met with a member of the SRT team from Brick Trails. Most of them live in Willets. They're wanting to expand their team. And we talked about different ways that they could partner with the city and even citizens, whether they're part of the city or not, to help improve the emergency response services around here. I met with, we had that transportation meeting. There was a constituent in the community that had requested that we bring forth requests for a stop sign. And Walter Cohen and city manager agreed to look into that and come back with some additional information. We have an upcoming transportation meeting. We're still waiting for confirmation from Councilmember Connie as to what date we're going to meet. I'll get that out to the public when I do know that date. MTA met two weeks ago, and we received an updated presentation on the housing project that's going in at the south end of town. I know that that went before the council, and I hadn't heard anything recently at our level. I know that Dusty has. But Mendocino Transit Authority received a presentation, and I'm the chairwoman for that organization. And the reason that they were coming specifically before us is because they were applying for some transportation grant funding, and they needed our support. And we talked a lot about ensuring that that housing project has the transportation needs, that we're putting in sufficient parking, and that, just lots of things that evolved around transportation. It was good conversation. Attended several of the Safe Halloween events. Attended the Veterans Breakfast with City Manager Bender, and then the flag raising. Airport meeting was supposed to be tomorrow, and it looks like it's postponed to next month. And then the chamber meeting will be on, with City Manager Bender and I, and Chamber of Commerce Representative, on Friday morning. And finance is meeting on the 20th. So I won't have updates, unfortunately, at the next meeting for you, because the way things will proceed, we'll have our, we'll have our opening of the meeting, and farewells, and then we'll recess, and have a little time to say goodbye. And then the new council will be seated. And since council announcements, communications, and reports are at the end, I won't be giving any reports at that next event, at that next time. Let's see, although I will be here. I'll just be on the other side of the table, which I'm happy to be at.
Me too.
Yes. I think that's all that I have. Do we have any Good and Welfare? Do you have Good and Welfare?
Yeah. Well, Willet's Economic Localization is still very active. And this is our new newsletter, just came out yesterday. So if anyone would like a copy of that, I've got a few copies. Just pass them around. And in there, among other things, is a article about the new land use plan, having been approved with a big milestone. And also, we get an experience board. And we have a party on December 2nd at the WELL office, which is right south of North Close Market, at 5:00, kind of like an open house, that will sort of be brainstorming what we want to do in the future with WELL. So the newsletter and the December 2nd event are there. Good and welfare. And my grandson was off over the weekend, as that is.
I think Good and Welfare certainly should be matched. But we have put forth a lot of hard work on behalf of the constituents of our community. I have, I have to say that I felt very... Is there an issue? Is there an issue?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I've felt very supported by the council. I feel like that we've worked very well as a team, and I've always respected opposing views and have appreciated my time here. City Manager Bender, I hope to have the opportunity at the next meeting, but I just want you to know that you have an absolute vote of confidence for me. I think that in the time that you've been here with the city of Willet's, you've done an excellent job. I was very vocal before you came on board about not feeling that as a council member that I was heard or supported. I felt like it was difficult to get facts. And I have found during your time here that you have been extremely transparent, easy to work with. That is not to say that we haven't disagreed. I think we would both agree that there have been many a times that there's been some healthy debate. But I have found that you have always been respectful and listened, and logic and facts have always been a key component of any conversation. And I've just really, I've really, really... And I've just really, I've really, really appreciated my time. I appreciate the, the city staff in a way that, before I got on the City of Willets, I, I didn't know about all the hard work that was done behind the scenes. And I understand the need for collaboration between council and staff, and how we, we, yes, we, council needs to give you good directions so that staff has the ability to shine and bring their best to the table in doing the work. And, and I've learned a new appreciation for that. And I just want to say thank you to the staff, and say thank you to City Manager Bender for also helping to, to lead this council in a positive direction. You've made, you facilitated a goal-setting session in the very beginning that has helped drive these last three, four years in a positive direction. And the city, I feel good about stepping away, knowing that the city is headed in a good direction. And I am just going to trust and hope that the future councils, regardless of what their decisions are, will, will use logic and fact, listen to the public, be kind, and respect the hard work that's been done by the council that, that is here. And, yeah, just do the right thing. And thank you all. And with that, I'm going to adjourn at 9:01.
We have closed session.
We're going to adjourn to closed session at 9:01.
Well, report. It's 9:30, we're back in open session. We took no action in closed sec, closed session. I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 9:31.